Ben?
No.
No, would you turn it on, please?
We are recording.
We are recording. All right, welcome everyone. It is six thirty-four, evening of February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And this is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding at the meeting. This time, I'll call the meeting to order, and would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome again. This time, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batcher.
Here.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
And Councilmember Highland.
Here.
All members are present. Also at the table with me this evening, on my left, is City Administrator Pat Melvin. On my right, City Attorney Ross Arneson. With us in the audience this evening, Police Chief John Zasky.
Fire Chief.
I did that one other time. I don't know, maybe that's your next job. Police Chief John Pedersen. Fire Chief John Zasky. Ambulance Supervisor Sarah Burton. From the Historical Society, we have Dwight Grabitzky. And then, also with us are the upcoming owners of the TSE Building, Lindsay Thomas, Austin Froundings, and Jacob Shostrom. Welcome, everyone. And also with us in is Kirk Mink. We can't forget about Kirk Mink. Okay, with that in mind, I would ask for any changes in the agenda.
We've got a few changes. Everybody have their pen handy. First item that we'd like to remove from the agenda is Item A, Approval of the December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, Regular Meeting Minutes. Second item is Approval of the January seventh, two thousand and nineteen, Regular Meeting Minutes, Item B. Both of those have been started by Vicki. They just have not been completed, so we'll work on having those available for you at the next council meeting to review. And then, I would like to add Item H.
Which is now F.
Or, which would now become F. Approval of the Gambling Permit for Ducks Unlimited High Island Bottom Feeders for an event to be held on April eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, at the Main Street Hall. So, we received this as a last-minute gambling permit and needed the time to get it approved, so we're putting it on the agenda this evening. Onto the second page. Item B, People's Services, Operations, December Operations Report. The plan is to eliminate that from this agenda. We will have them come to the next agenda, at which time, they'll give a more detailed report and also go through their annual, their monthly reports with council members, so that you better understand some of the contaminants that they are monthly measuring for as they look at the water. And then, the last item there, Item F, Financial Report. I ran out of time in getting that prepared. I will get that out to you this week in an email, so. Those are the changes.
Okay, and also, with the council's permission, I would like to move the report of the Annual Arlington Historical Society Report from Item Number Eight on the back of your agenda. Move it up to appear right after Item Five A, Citizens Addressing the Council. Mr. Grabitzky has another commitment, and we will definitely accommodate that by getting him on the agenda early, so. Any questions on the changes? Hearing none, motion is in order to approve the agenda as amended.
How much do you, that we accept the agenda as amended?
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Batcher, to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening are the following items, and they're renumbered, relettered now with the changes. So, Item A will be the Approval of the February fourth, two thousand and nineteen, Special Workshop Minutes. Item B, Approval of the February fourth, two thousand and nineteen, Regular Meeting Minutes. Item C, Approval of the Bills. Item D, Approval of the Minnesota Rodeo Association High Island Arena and Ambulance Service Agreement. Item E, Approval of Arlington Volunteer Fire Department New Hires Ryan Benjamin, Howard Gray, Jason Litfin, Ali Padraza, and Michael Sutton. And then, lastly, Item F, Approval of the Gambling Permit for Ducks Unlimited High Island Bottom Feeders for an event on April eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, at the Main Street Hall.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Hattlestead, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion is carried. There are no public hearings this evening, and at this time, I would ask, is there anyone that wishes to address the council? Hearing none, I would then call on Dwight Grabitzky to give the report, the annual report of the Arlington Historical Society. Welcome Dwight.
Thank you. Let me grab, add a quick, for short, thing. I want to, I want to draw your attention to only a couple of items that are in the report. You do have, you do have copies of the report. The first item I'd like to draw your attention to is the Bylaws Change on Page Two. And what happened is, over the years, we've gotten things a little bit differently than the original bylaws for, as they were written. Quite a number of years ago, we separated the Secretary and Treasurer's positions, and the bylaws just showed a Secretary and Treasurer, but we've had two for quite a number of years. So, we did separate those two positions and further define what both of them are responsible for and what they are to do. In addition, because we're getting a little older, we don't always have everybody there. We did add a Vice President position to the council, or to the board, so we did. And basically, we are still the same seven people that we've had for several years. This is only the second change. The other change that we made was about eight or ten years ago, when the original program had only five people on, and we found out that five wasn't enough. And with the help of the City Attorney, we were able to change that part of the wording to make it five to seven, five to twelve people, not less than five, not more than twelve on the board. But anyway, those are the changes that we've made, and we defined that. Far back in the, on Page Twelve, you'll see what the actual changes were. We did add a little bit to the meeting schedule, getting the Treasurer's Report and Approval. And these are things that we've been doing all along, Committee Report. Again, that's something under Roberts' rules, so we have a place in that for the, for the, those are the changes that we made to the bylaws. The other thing I'd like to point out is that this past year, we did accumulate a number of items related to Arlington. Dr. Noack gave us a lot of things from the old HM Noack and Sons Company. Very, very nice to have these things, because they tell the story of the community, they tell the story of one of the businesses there. We also received a film that was taken during the fire. This is the only, actually, only visual item of the Kennet Packard Fire. You can't see an awful lot on the film, it's only about two and a half minutes long, but you do see people walking around, and you do see one of the walls collapsing. This was, it was shot during, during the actual, during the fire at that time. So, this is the only, only thing that we have. Really great, glad to have that as part of our collection. We collected a clock which came from Dr., or came from Mr. Haber. I've got people trying, I've been asking about, trying to figure out who he was. He only was here about fifteen months in town, but his name is prominently on the clock. And it says Arlington, Minnesota. That's kind of a nice thing to have. We know the story about what happened to the clock, why it left town and how it got here. We don't, we really don't know about anything about that of the clock maker. It was really, it's something that we're digging deeper into. Those are the two items. You can look at the, on the numbers in the back. We did get a grant. We spent the money on the, for the lighting program. These are things that we're going to be trying to do this coming year. Looking for another grant, hopefully, to cover all of the cost of the lighting itself. We know that we can't cover the entire cost by just going after that part of the grant, so we're going to have to raise some money on our own. Probably going after some smaller grants, will probably be coming around to people in the community as well, looking to fill in the gaps. Until I meet with the Minnesota Historical Society, I won't have a real good number as to how much we'll have to come up with locally. I'm guessing a few thousand dollars, but right now, until, until we see what the Minnesota Historical Society tells us, we, I don't know what we'll have to raise here in town. If you've got any questions on any part of it, I'm willing to answer them now. If you, if you ever would like to just get together and come and see the museum, please, give me a call. We have, during the year, we'll have different family get-togethers, or lately, it's been class reunions, and they've asked to see the museum, so I will do all that I can during the week, or sometimes to show people what we have. I love showing it off, I love telling about the things. All right, any questions from you then?
How have your Saturday mornings throughout the summer been as far as visitors? I know that popped in a couple times, there seemed to be people there.
They, it's been all anywhere from one or two, we've always had somebody, we've always had somebody. So, one or two people, and I think on Saturday, the largest number was at eleven, or this past year. A year ago was the largest one on a Saturday, was near twenty. We were hoping to, I think we had nineteen, and we were hoping that one more person would come every day. It's just a magic, you know, it's just those magic numbers, you just like to get one more.
Okay, any other questions for Dwight? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Very appreciate it.
And thank you for allowing me to do this.
Okay, right. All right, we'll move into the announcements.
First item that we have, council, is a reminder about the League of Minnesota Cities Conference that is coming up on February twentieth and twenty-first, Christ on Capitol Hill Lutheran Church, one oh five University Avenue West, for the two thousand and nineteen Legislative Conference. In reviewing your packet, you should have found a number of different topics. They'll basically, will include meeting various state leaders, conveying to them what your needs are within the city, and also letting them know what your budget priorities are for two thousand and nineteen. If anybody wishes to attend, please let myself or Laura know, and we'd be more than happy to arrange that training session for you. Second item is awarding the Darren Mathwig Community Service Award, which will be done at the Arlington's, Arlington Lions Fish Fry on February twenty-second at five P.M. Third item is the Sibley County Branding Breakfast, which will be on Friday, February twenty-second, from eight A.M. to nine thirty, in the Sibley County Commissioner's Room at the Sibley County Courthouse. This will be an opportunity for businesses to stop in and chat a little bit about branding, the process that's involved, how does it affect a small business, how does your logo fit in, what should you look for in creating and using a logo, and a lot of other related topics. If you are interested in attending, please contact Amy Newsom at five oh seven, two three seven, seventy-eight hundred, to make your arrangements. Next item is Technology Help, being offered through the Sibley County Enrichment Program. That will be on Thursday, February twenty-eighth, from nine A.M. to noon, at the Arlington Community Center Chambers. The cost is ten dollars, and any technology help that you need, somebody will be on hand to assist you, whether it's working with a computer, a tablet, or a phone, learning how to use Facebook, et cetera. Somebody will be there, able to help you out with some of your technology needs. And then, the last but not least, we have the Blood Mobile, which is scheduled for March fifth, here at the Arlington Community Center, from twelve thirty to six thirty. So, thank you to all the volunteers who give blood, and we hope that they'll have a record number of donors.
I have a question about Item B, the, and, Technology Help. Do you just have to pre-register?
My understanding is that you just have to, well, thank you Ben for bringing that up. You do have to register by contacting the Community Development of Sibley County, or Amy Newsom at five oh seven, two three seven, seventy-eight hundred. So, great question, Ben, thanks for asking.
Okay, any other questions on the announcements? We'll move right into Communications.
First item is the Police Department.
Good evening, Chief Zasky. Might as well mess it up good if I'm going to mess it up.
Right. So, I believe everybody got a copy of our statistics, like our monthly normal. I guess, just to touch base on those, the count for January two thousand and nineteen, as Vicki has so clearly detailed, was three hundred, and for two thousand and eighteen, it was a hundred and ninety-two for calls for service. The rest of that is pretty boring, and we'll just leave it at that. So, just to update the council, we had our interviews for the hire of the new officer, and we went through the second interview process. Michelle was able to sit in for Tom, and Pat and I were in the last of the four applicants. We did have a number-one candidate, and after our interviews, we made a decision to offer a position to her. So, I guess at this point, I could announce the name of Haley, or Bailey, I'm sorry, Bailey Holasek. She's out of Chaska. So, she accepted to fill out our background packet, and the next steps will be the background and the psych. So, we are expecting a, the end of her background to be probably May eighth, and I'll get her psych scheduled if we can, or if we have to do that shortly thereafter. So, we should be moving along and progressing with that. Along with the hire of her, we're going to need to get a couple other pieces of equipment, one would be a gun, I think we talked about that before, and the other is another taser. And I'm going to inquire with a couple other local agencies that have phased out these tasers that we carry right now, because they're being phased out actually by the company, but they're still functioning, and there's still parts and equipment out there. So, if I can get one for, you know, a hundred bucks or something from the county or from another smaller agency, we can make do with these until we have to transition everybody to a newer system. I guess they're not even making batteries for these anymore, so we'll see what we can do, trying to minimize the costs with the addition of the officer. So, along with that, an advantage that we came across for the background, if you remember last year, we were asking about backgrounding a new hire and the costs that go with it, we were looking at about a twenty-five-hundred-dollar bill to have an outside agency do our background of a new officer, because I can't do it by suggestions of the League of Minnesota Cities. The chief shouldn't be doing the background on the hire of the new officers. So, we looked at some training that was out there, and James just completed a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar two-day training, so he can do our background. So, twenty-five-hundred, two thou, or two-hundred-and-fifty, I think we're doing well with that. So, it'll take him, you know, a few days of his shift hours in time, I guess, to add to that, but for the most part, it's going to be pretty speedy, I think, for us.
Chief, one question.
Sure.
You said May eighth, is that right?
Uh, March eighth, I'm sorry.
I was questioning that too.
Looked at it, said it wrong. March eighth is when we're hoping to have the background, then the psych. So, we should have a hire date, I'm guessing, by April, first or second week. So, thank you for clarifying that. All right, in addition to that, as long as we're on the topic of some training, there's a chief's convention that I attended last year, and that's going to be coming up again April fourteenth through the seventeenth. It's a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cost. I guess I don't know if I need approval to go to that, but I would appreciate attending again. It was pretty beneficial last year for the liability of administration purposes, and there's many other topics. I printed off a schedule, if any of you'd like to see that as well, kind of covers the topics, but we've got some time to make some decision on that. Fire Department is also going to be attending a Pipeline Operations Training tomorrow night, and I'm going to tag along with a few of the guys on that, to kind of go over some of the pipeline emergencies that could come across, and I guess we have a few of those in our area that I, our agency could be helpful of if we have a situation that would happen. So, I'm going to jump in on that, and if we think that it's something we should send our officers to, we're going to probably send them to upcoming trainings that they offer as well. Update on the squad. I just talked to them again today. They got backlogged on the weather that we had, so they're looking at a March fourth, we should be getting our two thousand and sixteen Explorer that we had gotten, all decked out with lights and ready to go, so that shouldn't be a problem. I know you had mentioned that the minutes are a little bit behind, and some of that's my fault. We have Vicki working on some M.O.C. codes, which Ross knows more about than the rest of you probably, but it's a requirement by the BCA and their, the CJIS, CJRS Crime Reporting System, to have these M.O.C. codes done, and it's something that's been lacking in lieu of her being able to be more full-time with the department. So, we've been given a March tenth deadline for that, and it's something that's going to come together quick once we can sit down and all of us are kind of taking a part of it. So, we'll be able to make the deadline, but that's a little bit as to why Vicki's been tied up with some of the time. On a more fun note, snow ordinances have been just a lot of fun recently. We've been getting a couple complaints about the parking in our downtown Main Street, or Main, the main parking lots, and the city-owned lots, and I guess I'd like to entertain the idea of putting up some parking signs in our city parking lots, anything that's owned by the city. We don't have any specific code or ordinance that covers parking in a parking lot at this time. So, I guess it's kind of twofold on what I'm requesting. The signs, I'd like them to say something along the lines of no parking more than forty-eight hours, in which case, that will allow us to get rid of some of these vehicles that have been sitting in lots, city-owned parking lots, longer than the forty-eight hours. There's some rental apartment complexes that are filling these lots, and they seem to homestead there, or the vehicle breaks down, and I think forty-eight hours is a pretty adequate amount of time for us to give them a notice and tell them, you need to make some arrangements. Otherwise, we're having a difficult time getting some of the snow removal and cleanup done. We've, Kirby and I have talked about this over and over, as far as the difficulties that we have in a snow emergency being declared, all it details is streets. So, we can't declare necessarily a snow emergency in the parking lots to get people to move from the lot out onto the street once that's cleaned. It's just that the timing is really difficult. So, the, the parking restrictions, just by putting signs up, I think would be a solution to help us get people moved along. If anybody else has any other ideas, I'd be, you know, how I would entertain any of them. Other than that, I think that's about all that I've got on the parking side of it. The ordinances themselves, or the code that we have, the other thing I'd like to consider is putting in a more specific, there's, there's a section in here that says no parking of snowmobiles or recreational vehicles for more than forty-eight hours on somebody's front yard. I'd like to see something that says specifically no parking more than forty-eight hours on the street also, so that we could incorporate the street and the city-owned parking lots for those same reasons, that we don't have vehicles that are just being parked and left for long periods of time. Ben, we had a vehicle parked across from your street last fall, and it's, for the longest time, we tried to make contact with the owner, and if we had a little bit more restrictive forty-eight-hour parking, or, or maybe even a little bit longer, just to give people, you know, if they're on vacation or something along those lines.
So, that's any time of year, now you aren't talking about just winter now, but...
Correct, any time of year. And on the public streets, it's not necessarily as much of a nuisance, because Kirby can plow around them. We can declare it's a street maintenance emergency, but in the city parking lots, it's come to our attention that not necessarily is it an emergency to get those lots cleaned out. We've had people that they, they park in the parking lots instead of in front of their house, but then they're not in a big hurry to get the vehicle out of the parking lots so that we can get those cleaned up. So, I guess I'm more concerned about those parking lots right now, if we could get some signage that we could post, and then if we could look at some other consideration for the streets to limit the amount of, or the length of time that somebody can just sit there as well.
Would there may, need to be some ordinance changes to spell out what the penalty is? If they, you know, in other words, the signs would tell them forty-eight hours?
I'd have to way back...
Would we need to do so?
With Ross and see, if we could just put signs up to start with and have them follow the basic thirty-five-dollar fine that we have right now, if that's kosher?
Yes, and I think an ordinance change would probably spell out that during winter snow, snow emergencies, it'd be the same ticket and towing process as we have for the streets right now.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because the goal is to be able to clean those parking lots. Just, just ticketing them, they might think, oh, thirty-five bucks, it's a cheap, you know, parking charge, and let it sit there. So, I think ultimately, we want to have the option to tow them too.
Okay.
But, Chief and I have discussed, it's a little bit of a challenge, because, you know, we want them off the screeds, you know, after a two-inch snow, so the streets can be plowed, but many people have no other option than to move those vehicles into parking lots. And if we have the same restrictions on the parking lots as we do on the streets, they really have nowhere to go unless they, you know, park out on the, you know, the city limit line or something. So, that's why I think we have discussed forty-eight hours, you know, in the parking lots. So that would give the city plenty of time to clean the streets. And then those people that need to move out of the parking lots can go back on the streets.
Yes, and some discretion on our part too, that, you know, we can, as Kirby would call for a snow emergency. You know, it may be more than two inches that have fallen and he waits a little while longer to declare an emergency. Um, you know, then we start doing what we need to do. He may call it at two o'clock in the afternoon. We don't necessarily wanna chase everybody out of the downtown area and away from the businesses, which has been kind of a complaint. Where we try to get that downtown area cleaned up and the fire routes opened. Businesses are feeling like we're shutting their business down in effect because we're asking those vehicles to move from the front of their business. To a back lot or to a different location. And they said they could just as well close their doors because it makes it look like, you know, we're just shutting it down now.
Yeah, yeah.
So just some discretion on our part, uh, being able to be flexible with some of that. But yet have the tools to enforce it if it exceeds a certain period of time. So the signage, I think, would be a very good thing to help us with those parking lots as of right now.
So could there be, I'm, I'm trying to think out loud, as far as there's no parking on the streets, nobody, they won't have a place to park. Couldn't we offer them the parking lots for the first twenty-four hours? And then like other communities do, like, you know, the odd streets, even streets, we could say, snow emergency. We're clearing all streets. The second day of a snow emergency, we clear all the lots. That way it's uniform, it's not forty-eight hours, it's the day after. So they can clean it, clean it up.
And for every scenario that comes up, there's another one that it's, puts a snag in it. So I, I'm open to any kind of ideas. But, you know, like tonight, we've got a storm that might be coming and then in another fourteen hours, we might get hit with another one. And then it's that sequential thing of the snow just piling up on some of these vehicles that sit. So i- it's, it, it's more complex than, um, you know, than just having the, after two inches, two hours. We start towing and, or tagging and then we tow twelve after that. There's dynamics that come in that other people bring up that, um, you know, I think we just need some flexibility, but yet the tools to move the vehicles if we need to. So. I don't know that there's any one perfect solution. We looked at, you know, Gaylord and some other cities that, that do it. And they're, they're just black and white and they don't, they just tow, they don't give warnings. Nobody walks up to the door and knocks on it and says, hey, can you move your car? The plows are coming. Um, they just tow and ticket them. And I don't wanna get to that point either, so. But it becomes a burden.
Well, I think it's hard though, if nobody, if they don't have a place to park and we're taking away the parking lots too. Then they're really not gonna have a place to park.
Well, they would have a place to park, then they could go in the parking lots for forty-eight hours. By that time, then the streets would be cleared.
And technically, if that vehicle can move, that, that tells us at least it's an operable vehicle. It isn't one that's just dilapidated and the battery's dead and the tires are, you know, or it's inoperable and they're changing the oil on it every. Those types of things are kinda what we're running into.
If you say forty-eight hours though, you have to move it every forty-eight hours.
Yep.
That takes away that piece. But, okay, so I move mine after twenty-four hours, I go park back after another twenty-four hours, somebody else is still parked there. You're not clearing the lot, you're just letting people move back in and so then trying to clear the lot of the snow or whatever. In that instance, I don't know if that'll work that well. We're declaring like a snow emergency after we clear the streets on the parking lots. I think would fix that, cause then they'd have room to park. And yet, we're gonna run into situations like this week where there's a snow and then there's another snow.
And it's kinda two separate issues, you know, the one is the long, the, the length that a vehicle's just sitting there. For instance, we had one by the Lido Theater that had been sitting there covered with snow. And I thought that was a dilapidated, didn't wanna start. Couldn't get a hold of the guy, he works out of town. Finally got in touch with him and he's like, oh, yeah, my girlfriend's in the apartment, get the keys and she can move it. What was the one next to it though? That one was c- clear of snow. And they had been actually shoveling around it, but that one is, battery's dead and hasn't moved for, you know, a couple weeks too. Maybe months, um, but because those were apartment complexes, we really haven't looked at them a whole lot. Because they, they live right there, you know, and as I was understood that they were kinda grandfathered in on some of the parking exceptions a long time ago. So our focus has mainly been getting main street parking lot cleaned out and, and not having those ISRs at those locations. Well, now we're having ISRs at the other two, so.
Well, and just to share, John, Kirby and I had some discussion the other day too. And we were looking at the possibility of, is there a way that we could notify residents of, of, you know, we're in a snow emergency effective. You know, at six o'clock tonight, try and get that word out there. So I know John was gonna check with the county, they have a code red system which they can, you know, one touch of a button, boom. Send, send out either a text message or a voicemail just alerting people to, you know, a snow emergency is now in effect. Also, I recently got a email from, uh, the city of Winthrop, uh, indicating that they were looking at going, uh, with something like this. And, uh, are there any other relatively close communities that are interested in something similar? They were gonna have a demonstration and we're inviting others. And I said that we certainly would be interested in taking a look at that. So maybe that's another route to try and reach people and let them know, hey, move your car now or.
Well, could we do like what the city of Minneapolis and other communities do and just call up K S ninety-five or what, the tele- uh, W C C O or whatever? I mean, that's probably free instead of spending money, not that I wanna be cheap, but that could sell to everybody. And then the use of our city sign too.
Gets out to everybody that tunes into that station.
And sits and watches it continuously until it happens to run across.
Acts, has poor alerts to it though.
What about Sibley Scoop?
Well, that's Facebook, it's already on Facebook, we put it on Facebook, the city does.
That could be something sent. A lo- a lot of people have phones and emails that they're checking constantly.
Ben, are you referring to what the school sends out for their notifications?
Yeah, or, you know, you, if they could help us or we could just do it and dependent of them.
So I talked to the sheriff and he didn't, he wasn't interested in getting into the business of making snow emergency notifications through the sheriff's office. The sc- the school, I talked to them and that's a paid service, I think that they have. And I don't know that that's anything we can tag along on as well. Uh, they didn't seem really interested in, they directed us to the name of the company and we could certainly get, you know. And see how much that would cost. I haven't looked into it yet. But we were also looking at, that if we were able to get maybe some new technology in our phone systems locally. That digital phone system may have the ability to input all of our utility users. Which would be every house in town. And if those utility customers have a cellphone, we could add that in and it could be a potential output to text messages and that type of thing. The problem we're having is Facebook on the police department and Facebook for the city only hits a small number of folks. And complaints that we're getting are, we didn't know there was a snow emergency and, and we fall back on, well, a two-inch roller is the same all over town. A- and we usually wait till three before it, you know, really gets drawn out, um. So ev- every time we turn around, there's a discussion of how could we do it better? And I think we're just trying to entertain all that.
Well, I think grabbing everybody's information as far as their email addresses and/or their cellphone numbers and their provider. There's a very easy way to do like an email to text. So, but citizens are, have to be willing to give the city the information.
Yep.
Otherwise, you know, they wouldn't be able to be put on that list. Um, and that doesn't take long to set up. Once it's set up in a group, then it's easy to push it out. Via email, so.
Couple other complaints that we're getting to and we're trying to address them is, the city code says no parking on your front yard. And it doesn't say in the wintertime or in the summertime or, it just says no parking in your fr- front yard. Uh, unless it's, you know, for a sale of a vehicle or just a short period of time. What we have been, uh, trying to keep an open mind with and be flexible about is that people blow out a section of their front yard. And they get off the streets so that we can have super clean streets and that's great. But then they leave their vehicle parked there for the next week or till the next snowstorm. And they start to think that that's an acceptable parking spot, uh, for the duration of the wintertime. So we've been knocking on those doors and we'll take and we'll put a, a red sign on there that says, and with an explanation that also says. We appreciate you parking off, off the street when there's a snowstorm, but once the street's cleared, could you move it back onto the front, uh, street side? Um, and, you know, we get a lot of cooperation, but there's a few that just don't buy into that. And I, I don't know what the solution's gonna be either. We're, we're trying the warnings, we're trying to, um, make it as painless as possible. But we're still getting complaints, so.
Well, I know the rule, I think, from what I've been gathering from the guys that do the snow plowing and, and, you know, Kirby and, and Jeff Claire. And some of the local plowers that, they all kinda coordinate their, their effort. And it seems that as soon as the snow stops, the plowing starts. Or maybe even, you know, they're watching the radar pretty close because they all have a lot of driveways to do and a lot of roads to do. And, uh, we'll say let Clara get through with the grader. And Kirby and Mike with the snow plows and then the contractors go out and clean up the driveways. Hopefully after the graders have gone through, so there isn't a big wind roll. So I think if we all know that as soon as the snow stops, the plowing starts. And I mean, that's kinda when you have to move your vehicles off the street and you get them out of the way. You know, or else you're gonna get a, a, a ticket.
I, I think there's some room for people to be a little bit ingenious and friendly in their neighborhood and ask, ask maybe. I know in our neighborhood, there's an elderly couple that seldom takes their cars out of the garage. Neighbor across the street goes over and cleans out their driveway and parks their cars in the neighbor's garage, in the neighbor's driveway. So he does his good deed by cleaning out the driveway. Uh, in exchange, the neighbor is, the elderly couple is letting him park his cars in his driveway, in their driveway.
Is that you, Rich?
That isn't me. I can see it from my window, but it's not me and I really, I really admire somebody that, you know, is, is willing to, oh, I could do this and accomplish it. You know, I could not park in my front yard, but rather park in the neighbor's driveway. But I may have to shovel it out first, which they do, so.
It works. And I don't know the exact number of houses we have in town, it's presuming about twelve-hundred houses. You know, out of those, if we're getting six or eight complaints.
That's not bad.
I- it's not terrible, um.
It's never gonna be zero.
Right.
Well.
Yep. But some of them are rising to the point of, you know, formal complaints against the, you know, the officers or the department and. Yeah, if we can make it less painful, I, I'd be interested in doing some of that. So that's all I had for.
Yeah.
Other things, um, I guess, I don't know if there's another meeting or another time that we should talk about those forty-eight hours, like parking signs? Or if that's something that we could just go ahead and move forward with?
Uh, we have a committee that could at least get together and talk about that.
Okay.
Either police or streets committee. I think both should be maybe involved.
We could schedule something.
Should've figured out by June or July.
It's done snowing, right?
Maybe.
By, by fall, I'd be okay with it, just so that we're in preparation for next year.
For next year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the signs probably wouldn't get up before, at the end of winter anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks.
Council members, included in your packet is the January building report. As you can see, we have a total of, uh, nine, uh, permits that were pulled. Uh, for a total evaluation of fifty-seven thousand. Uh, three of those nine were for commercial properties. And it looks like the most significant ones were for window installation. Are there any questions on the list that was provided in your council packet?
No, I like the new format though, I can read it.
Okay. Do we ever get an annual report from our building inspector? Is that part of his? Part of his, uh, job to report to the council once a year? I don't know it.
Didn't we get that last?
We haven't seen it.
You, you did receive a, uh, an annual report, year-end report. But yes, Darren will be coming in at some point to talk to you and give you kinda more in-depth, uh, details about what he's seen within Arlington. So we do have that on the, the radar screen.
Okay. You're up.
Next item is the fire and ambulance, uh, service coverage. Uh, meeting was held on January twenty-fourth. Uh, we sat down with various members of the township, uh, to talk a little bit about the, um, funding. Basically, the, the city has worked with the townships and in some cases with, uh, the city of Green Isle. To establish a formula for paying for, uh, both the ambulance and the fire services. Our numbers, uh, starting out with the ambulance, our numbers for two thousand eighteen, uh, went slightly higher than what they were in two thousand and seventeen. We had a total of four hundred and twenty-three, uh, ambulance calls. Uh, based on, on that, we take an average of the two thousand and seventeen actual. As well as the two thousand eighteen actual number and the two thousand nineteen budgeted number. To come up with a formula based on the percentage of household calls. Uh, we use that then to arrive at a distribution of costs. What we are looking at for two thousand and, uh, twenty is to. Have the city of Arlington will be, uh. The city of Arlington will be paying twenty-five thousand seventy-eight dollars. The city of Green Isle will be paying four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. And the townships amongst themselves will be dividing out a total of fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. To, uh, help pay for ambulance service. Uh, basically for the townships, this equates to, uh, a hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-two cents per section. With the townships, not all sections are covered, uh, portions of those sections are covered. So, uh, the numbers have been evaluated, uh, based on, on sections. So we have provided this information to the townships and will be continuing to, uh, dialogue with them. As they start to, uh, work on, uh, paying for those expenses. The second part of the meeting then takes a look at the fire expenses. Again, we're taking a look at the two thousand eighteen, uh, performance, the two thousand nineteen budget numbers. And then the twenty-twenty, uh, charges that will be necessary to fund the service in twenty-twenty. We had a total of, um, fifty-seven calls in two thousand eighteen. Whereas we had thirty-eight calls in two thousand seventeen. And I believe John will be talking, uh, a little later this evening. He can give you more details if you have any questions about that. Again, we stick with a very similar formula in coming up with the expenses for the fire department. Basically, what we are looking at for. Basically, what we are looking at for uh, twenty. Twenty is to have a cost of three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Per section. For two thousand nineteen, the year before, we had three hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Per section. The city of Arlington will be contributing fifty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. Towards that. The item which is significant in twenty-twenty is that the fire department. Will be looking at purchasing a tanker. Estimated cost to be about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And uh, based on that breakdown, um, we are looking at uh. Uh, the city's having to pay a portion of that, which would be um. Actually, I don't have that number broken down just by townships, but townships will be paying for the tanker, one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And fifty-four cents per section for the tanker. So that would be in addition to the rate of. Three thirty-seven sixty-seven per section. So that's a brief, quick summary. Uh, you've got the more detailed full report included in your council packet. Are there any questions that I can answer at this time?
Just to point, the uh, reason for the timing of this is the, all the township meetings are in the first part of March. And they actually set their tax levy for twenty-twenty at that meeting. So uh, these numbers needed to be put together. Every year, they need to be put together with that date as a target. So. Any questions regarding the fire and ambulance charges or fire and ambulance reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item.
John, do you wanna come up for? Included in your packet is a fire report that John put together.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome, Chief.
Uh, it's a little different here. This year, usually I present the packet here and you already had it, so. Um, the three biggest changes for twenty-eighteen was alarms were up and they were due to the city of Arlington, but with working with Kirby. We changed out the fire panel and stuff here at the community center, so that number should drop down considerably. Uh, the helipad was up considerably. That was due to the construction at the hospital this year. That number again should drop down. And accidents were up slightly in the Arlington township. Is there any questions on the? Since you studied it, Tom?
No questions.
One of the things that uh, was the truck in twenty-eighteen, we did the pickup. Um, that came in at a little over forty-seven thousand and we. We said that we'd keep it to forty-five thousand and the relief association picked up the additional. Along with uh, Maverick in town here donating tires and my own body shop installing all the stuff on the truck. So that's how we were able to keep the truck down so cheap. Other than that, the report, there really isn't a whole lot. Mutual aid went up basically one. And I think that will continue to go up with the neighboring towns. Struggling to have firefighters. You know, currently we have thirty. Uh, you look at Green Isle, Henderson and New Auburn, they're lucky if they have one during the day in town, so. I think our mutual aids will be going up to help them. Other than that, there isn't a whole lot with the report.
Maybe just a little background for those that might be watching this uh, meeting later. As far as the replacement of the tanker, little information as to the shape that the old tanker truck is in, that was.
That was my next thing to ask, if I could talk about that.
You may.
Okay, so we have a nineteen ninety tanker that needs to be replaced. Uh, it's been in the, the schedule for quite a while. Uh, the frame has been fixed three times. They told us Christ steel that the next time we brought it there to get fixed, it would be tagged. Uh, in two thousand sixteen, we decommissioned the pump on it, cause it was gonna cost over ten thousand dollars to fix it. And they won't guarantee the price at ten thousand dollars. The last time the clutch went out was a year ago. Um, peeps in town couldn't find a flywheel for it, so they had to machine it. There's no parts available for the clutch anymore. So, if I can continue on with the.
Yours?
New truck, Rich?
Yeah.
So, last time I was here is about two weeks ago and we talked about the price of the truck at, the initial price was three twenty-five. Well, we went back to all our vendors and we also joined Sourcewell. So the numbers went in our favor. First time back, three nineteen. Second time back was three seventeen. Third time back was three oh nine. At that three oh nine price right now, there's over fifty changes yet we have to make between the two vendors. What didn't go in our favor since our first initial meeting with you two weeks ago. Peterbilt raised the price of their chassis fourteen hundred dollars. That's the base chassis, that's no motor or transmission or anything. They tell me there's a few slots left for the third quarter for this chassis and there's a few more left for fourth quarter. With that being said, the townships are gonna need to know come March, what the decision is and dollar a moan. So, right now we're, to back up again. I would propose setting a not to exceed tonight. And to let us negotiate using the truck for a demo. We've done that with our engines. We've done that with our rescue. We usually get the truck, when we get the truck, they have it two to three months. We get the truck with about three thousand miles, they knock off five thousand dollars. It's actually a pretty good deal, cause they drive it to shows if there's any bugs in the truck before we get it. They've taken care of it. So that, that's a quick, easy way we could save five thousand dollars on the truck. We're down to Rosenbauer and Custom Fire. They're pretty basically the same. Uh, right now, Custom Fire is cheaper than Rosenbauer. With a stainless steel body versus an aluminum body. We have three custom trucks right now in our haul and they really want our business back again. They uh, they dropped big time. They, they dropped from the three twenty-five to the three oh eight. And Rosenbauer in turn matched them, but went aluminum. So there's, there's quite a bit of difference. Rosenbauer for the same truck in stainless wants uh, three nineteen. Now with these change orders that we're gonna be making yet. I think realistic, we can get right around that three hundred thousand mark. I think that was ultimately the goal that the townships and council wanted. So it asks tonight that we cap it at three hundred thousand. And let us do some negotiating yet and get into fine details. So that in March, roughly first part of March, we can sign on this before there's another increase. The manufacturers are telling us they're expecting a steel price increase. If we lock in, we don't absorb the, they'll absorb the steel price. Questions, concerns? We're actually, as a fire department committee, we're meeting again on Thursday. To discuss the outcome of this council meeting, so how we can get this truck down lower. Also, I did check into leasing the truck. Both Rosenbauer and Custom told me that seventy-five percent of their trucks that go out are leased now, cause you can save the cost of the bonding. I also gave Pat some information on another company that leases equipment to cities. So there is some money there too to go leasing. It's a lease to buy. Uh, talking with Wade from Custom today, he said that if you don't wanna make a payment, a lease payment until twenty-twenty. Or twenty-twenty-one, you just tell them what, what day you wanna make the payment, how much you wanna put down and how many years you wanna go. He said that's pretty common how towns are doing it now, cause the bonding expense.
So they're basically financing the truck for you?
They must do it through some second vendor.
But I mean, of, you know, at least you give it back. We're not giving it back. You pay your payments to them and then you own the truck.
Right. So, with talking to Wade, he said more towns do that than bonding, because I, I don't know what it costs to bond, but it must be substantial.
Couple percent.
And he said.
Plus the interest you pay on the bond.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and he said you eliminate the bond costs and plus, he said for the leasing part, it's fairly easy for municipalities to lease. Because the vendors are pretty confident they're gonna get paid.
Have you looked at that at all, Pat, as to? How that would shake out in the long run?
You know, I, I sent some information over to Shannon Sweeney, uh, letting him know what portion would be the city and. I think obviously we'd have to find out from the townships, how many wanted, you know, have us finance versus. Uh, how many maybe have funds available. But Noah, I can certainly have some more information and get out to you later this week on that issue.
Well, we really wouldn't have to make a decision on how we wanted to finance it right now. I think the only decision right now we need to make is. A motion to have him stay under three hundred thousand dollars and move ahead. So I mean, I can make that motion right now. And then we can figure, we can figure out finances.
Right.
And nail them down later. Just so that he can meet with his group.
Just, I mean, is three hundred enough? Should we go like three oh five or something, or?
The Relief Association is gonna be putting money into the block parties.
Okay.
So, and with, with going through this, once these specs all roll out, I, I feel pretty confident. You know, I went through this pretty good today again. And with the truck committee last night, we met again. And we all felt, felt pretty confident that with the cuts we make and with the relief point, putting in their share, we should be okay. It kinda, it kinda worked out like the pickup did. And we also have some money that's been donated to us. That is sitting in a fund with the city right now for the truck. And we didn't use the, all the money that was donated for the pickup, so that money's also available.
Okay.
So there is, there is a cushion right there.
And it's probably beneficial for you to go and say we've been authorized up to three hundred.
Right.
Can you work with us?
Cause that way we can narrow a vendor down and we can sit down with them. Cause I would think by mid-March at the latest, we're gonna wanna sign some kind of a purchase agreement to at least get the chassis.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise, we're gonna end up with a twenty-twenty-one and you know what, that's gonna do the price.
Sure. Okay, there has been a motion to cap, to uh, cap the cost of the tanker at three hundred thousand. And allow the fire department to move forward with that number in mind. Most have been made by council member Batchra, second by council member Cowell. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously.
Go buy a truck.
I think the gentleman at that end will have to sign the purchase agreement on that one. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Congratulations on the new uh, hires also.
Yes, recruits.
Yeah, we're full. We have thirty. Biggest fire department in the county.
Nice. Way to go.
Uh, I think for, for a while.
For a while.
Nice. Oh, don't forget to go to the fish fry. The proceeds from the fish fry on Friday are going to the fire department.
All right. Sure. All right, um, I would like to move item number twelve. Approve or deny purchase agreement for sale of TSE building. Up in the agenda right now. So it would be placed above ordinances and resolutions. And at this time then, we will approve or deny purchase agreement for sale of TSE building. Who's gonna lead this one, but?
Amy, do you wanna? Present anything, or Ross, you I know have made some changes. You can maybe uh, speak to the change that you made.
It was just a very minor one, I guess uh, uh, the buyers uh. Not quite sure how their blueprints are gonna come out. Uh, didn't wanna be committed to that up to six apartment units. And so we just took that language out. So it just reads now that their intent would be to remodel the building for both. Professional offices and apartments. So, that was the only change that was made.
Do you have, any of the potential owners have anything to report back as far as things that have happened since the last meeting? Uh, feel free to move up to the microphone there and.
Since the last meeting, um, last week we met with a, he's not actually technically an engineer, but. Him and another guy worked together and they get us the engineer and architect aspect that we were looking for. And uh, he was supposed to get back to us yesterday, Monday, and we haven't heard from him yet, so we're hopeful that by tomorrow or something that. We have blueprints down and we can move forward from there.
Anyone else have any items of?
I just wanted to share with the council that I did have a, a resident approach me to talk about this. Uh, this particular resident felt that it was unfair that uh, he was, that it was not made known on the listing. That there was this option uh, for someone who was bringing jobs, that they could get the. Uh, property for a lower dollar value.
I did have a couple people approach me on the same, same issue that uh, they felt that. Um, it wasn't publicized enough and uh. And I, you know, I thought it, I, I thought it was in the newsletter, but apparently it was not at one time, but. It sure seemed to be talked about a lot and um, it wasn't that we're, tried to keep it a secret, you know, where. It was out there, you know, through the ADA and I think Blanning and Zonia talked about it, we talked about it. So um.
I, I think the way that we kind of went with this was that uh. If someone came to, you know, to, to talk with Amy or someone went to the building and, and said that. This building seems to be a fit for me, however, the cost is something that, you know, I'm having a challenge with. Uh, we would, as part of the negotiating process, we would say, how many employees are you gonna be bringing with you? And then we would make that option available at that time. Um, I think that was kind of our strategy, was that it was a negotiating tool. Uh, and so it wasn't listed with the listing, it wasn't identified there, but it was simply a. A tool that we had in the city's handbag. If somebody found that space to be. Suitable for what they were looking for, that, then we could work with them further on the financing. If jobs were coming and it was bringing some additional economic impact to the city.
Pat, can I just say something?
Amy, please.
It was in the newspaper with Nicosi over and over again. And it was also headline news in the newspaper when we passed the policy.
Right. And, and the policy, I mean, it was from six or whatever, we have here from May, we adopted it. And it says clearly that any sale of the buildings is under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you have these criteria, you know, in a, a city-owned building or lot qualifies for this program. And then I did find Facebook postings that Amy put on as well that said there was incentives, or the price could be lowered if you had more employees. So did we market it probably, you know, the best, maybe not, but it was out there.
We had officials that did sell the building and I showed them, I gave them a copy of that commercial laws policy and they didn't, they didn't bite, so.
Right.
Anything else?
We need a motion to?
Do we need a mo?
Make a motion to approve the sale of the TSE building as, as the purchase agreement was amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Cowell, to, uh, approve the purchase agreement for sale of the TSE building. Is there any further discussion? All ma, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, ordinances and resolutions, uh, would be the next item, and resolutions that we have, the first resolution is eleven dash twenty nineteen, uh, amending a twenty nineteen fee schedule.
Councilmembers, included in your packet is a resolution which includes, uh, an excerpt of some of the fire department fees. Uh, as you can see, there are some changes, uh, there, uh, one of which is the accident or missing person section. Uh, in the past, we have charged a hundred and fifty dollars for each additional hour plus supplies, and the recommendation is that we increase that to two hundred dollars for each additional hour plus supplies. Uh, moving down the list to the eighth item there, the jaws of life, those were being billed out in two thousand and eighteen at a hundred and fifty dollars. We're recommending two hundred dollars for that equipment in two thousand nineteen. So those are the two items that we are recommending, uh, changes to for the fire department, two thousand nineteen fees.
I'll introduce Resolution eleven twenty nineteen, amending twenty nineteen fee schedule for fire rates.
I'll second it.
Resolution eleven dash twenty nineteen was introduced by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Hattlestead. Resolution is, uh, one that adopts the scheduled fee of fees and charges for the Arlington Fire Department. Any further discussion?
Uh, the cost per section on this document does not reflect the cost per section on, on this document. It has three hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents per section for the township protection, uh, protection fee on this resolution. And it looks like that should be three hundred and thirty-one seventy-two as far as this.
Three forty-one seventy-two?
Three hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Thirty-one seventy-two.
For twenty nineteen charges.
Thank you for catching that, Michelle.
Okay.
I'll amend it, uh.
Okay, amended to read to three thirty-one seventy-two.
Yeah.
That'd be the second entry from the bottom, township protection fee. Second is still good?
Yep.
Tom? All right. Any other discussion? So it'd be three changes then would appear. Vote by roll call, Councilmember Hattlestead.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchra.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the, I should say, five in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution twelve dash twenty nineteen regarding the planning and zoning fees for twenty nineteen fee schedule.
Working along those same lines, uh, Cynthia Smith Strack, the Planning and Zoning Director, uh, would like the council to have some discussion about, uh, increasing some of the planning and zoning fees, which previously have been listed at two hundred dollars plus a recording fee for the variance application, the conditional use permit application, the interim use permit application, the ordinance amendment application, as well as the rezoning application. Cynthia's suggesting that that fee be increased to two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and?
Plus a recording fee?
Plus a recording fee for those where it is duly noted, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution, Res- Resolution twelve dash twenty eighteen, amending twenty nineteen planning and zoning fees to twenty nineteen fee schedule.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Batchra introduced Resolution twelve dash twenty nineteen, it was seconded by Councilmember Yashewski, that resolution is, uh, Resolution adopting a schedule of fees and charges for the planning, for planning and zoning as indicated on the resolution itself, from, uh, two hundred dollars up to two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Was there, uh, explanation as to why we needed the increase at all, uh, along with it, or just?
It's a recommendation from Cynthia that the council have further discussion on the, on a possible increase. I know.
We're getting complaints that our fees are too high, that we wanna raise them again, I don't know.
I'm kinda thinking the same thing.
Well, I mean, all the admin costs are going up, our admin is going up, we hired a quarter time in there, um, to take care of some of that stuff, and I'm sure, I'm not sure what Cynthia's, um, schedule is for her payment and stuff, so, I mean.
I think her half is the same as last year.
Correct.
Same as twenty eighteen. Okay, still open for discussion.
I, I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, I don't see a lot of applications coming through for the different things we're talking about here, the various and conditional use, well, conditional use.
There's been a few. Not overwhelming.
Would the seventy-five or a hundred dollars additional make a difference?
Take a difference.
Here, or would the twenty-five dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars depending on what the application's for? You know, all of a sudden we're starting to talk to real money.
I don't mind raising the fees if, if, if we have to, shall I say, but if we really don't need to raise them.
Well, yeah, and I guess it.
Just to say, let's raise it another ten percent or fifteen percent, why?
Well, I think it probably.
Raising them to three hundred or three hundred and fifty dollars that we really needed the money.
No.
That'd make a difference, but.
I think it probably goes to being competitive with other communities, and we're probably more in line, is my guess.
But then, but we're guessing, I, I guess I'd like to know why, you know, a reason, I guess.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, as far as I know, there's nothing to back this up as far as
No.
statistics or comparisons or anything like that.
Would, would the council be interested in tabling this issue? We have a meeting coming up Thursday, Cynthia will be there at the meeting, and then you can hear directly from her, uh, why she's recommending the increase, or why she proposed that we have this discussion about it, and then you can make, if you so choose, you can approve it at the following council.
I'll resend my motion.
The motion's on the floor, I think we should vote for, vote on it.
Should we send it?
I can resend my, my motion.
What is the proper procedure for a resolution that's being introduced?
You just withdraw it?
I think you can withdraw it, sure.
Okay. Councilmember Batchra, you wish to withdraw your?
Yes.
And Councilmember Yashewski, withdraw your second. Okay, so at this time, uh, the introduction of Resolution twelve dash twenty nineteen, um, has been withdrawn.
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Motion by Councilmember Batchra to table the, uh, decision on this, uh, fee schedule, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion, and, motion made by Councilmember Yashewski to second the motion, and then this, uh, topic would be uh, tabled for further discussion, um, and, uh, again, we've got a council meeting, a joint council meeting coming up with the ADA and planning and zoning, and, uh, probably can be discussed at that time, or at a future planning and zoning meeting. Okay, uh, motion is then on the floor to table discussion on the, uh, uh, items contained in Resolution twelve dash twenty nineteen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion to table is carried, four votes to one. All right. Move on to Resolution thirteen dash twenty nineteen, accepting a donation and designating its use.
The Arlington Chamber of Commerce, uh, is, uh, donating a check in the amount of three thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, uh, for National Night Out, uh, based on proceeds, uh, that they made at the Purse Bingo. So, wonderful, uh, amount that was raised and can be used for future law enforcement celebrations in Arlington.
Not private celebrations.
Not private. Community, community.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution thirteen twenty nineteen, accepting a donation and, and designating its use.
Second it.
Motion by Councilmember Batchra, second by Councilmember Yashewski to, um, introducing, I should say, Resolution thirteen dash twenty nineteen, Resolution accepting a donation and designa, designating its use, the donation being from the Arlington Chamber of Commerce in the amount of three thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars sixty-seven cents, and that is to go towards the Arlington Night Out, uh, event. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call, Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Yes.
How, Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchra?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. All right, item ten, um, unfinished business regarding the final payment.
In the previous board council meeting, we discussed the, uh, final payment to OMG Midwest for their completion of the, uh, two thousand eighteen, uh, street and utility project, which basically was the overlay of Second Avenue. At that time, uh, council members brought up concerns with regards to some of the, uh, uh, seating issues that occurred along the boulevard, as well as some of the caulking that occurred in the fire station, uh, area. Uh, based on that, you as a council decided not to authorize the, uh, final payment, uh, and that was relayed to both, uh, uh, Jason Femerite, our city engineer, as well as OMG. And included in your council packet is a response from OMG, their project manager, Todd Albert. Uh, as you can see there, um, they felt that they had addressed the, the seating and caulking issues, um. They would like to have been notified last fall, so they could have come out and addressed it, um, and they are asking that you reconsider, uh, recognizing that holding seventy thousand dollars back from a project where the seating for the entire project was only eleven thousand, uh, they didn't feel that was an appropriate, uh, way to deal with this issue. They want to reassure the council that they're committed to coming out here in the spring and dealing with that caulking issue, as well as any other grass, uh, growth issues that we may have, but, uh, at this time would like to go ahead and, uh, uh, close out a portion of it and start the warranty work. Typically, the warranty doesn't start until these issues are, uh, resolved, and so, um, holding back, uh, both in their opinion, as well as in Jason Femerite's opinion, was not the way to go, so, um.
I have to agree with Jason, uh, I think holding seventy thousand dollars back for a eleven thousand dollar bid on the seating and so forth is excessive. Now, do we have anything in writing assuring, or assurance that they're gonna take care of the seating and the apron caulking at the, uh, fire station or EMS?
In their email, this is what, uh, Todd Albert is stating, rest assured, we want the city to be satisfied with the project, and we will get these issues addressed in the spring.
So even if they wrote the email, does that still hold them liable for that, Ross, if we pay them in full?
Uh, I guess arguably it would, um, um, well, another approach, uh, council could authorize, uh, disbursement of the bulk of the seventy thousand and still retain, you know, twenty, let's say, um.
But does that close out their project then, or not?
What's that?
That wouldn't close out their project, it wouldn't start that one.
No, it's kind of a unusual approach, I guess at this point, but I guess it's an option we could consider. Otherwise, I mean, if the, the work is warranted, you know, we have a legal, um, ability to pursue them further if they don't come back and, uh, cure it in the spring.
And, and do, are, we did not tell them that the caulking was still an issue and, and that the, the grass was still an issue in the fall?
We told them that it was an issue over the summer, and then they supposedly sent somebody out, however, that somebody.
They did send somebody out in fall to do some slit seating, and, uh, but I personally witnessed some areas that they didn't get to that were really thin, the grass was real thin, so, you know, who knows what it's gonna look like when, when the snow finally disappears. One thing I found out through Jason's correspondence is that the warranty does not cover the grass seating. So in other words, if you have areas where the grass isn't coming up, that's not warranted, it's just, I don't know why.
Well, it sounds like they wanna keep the city happy, and they've agreed to come out and do it in the spring.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, you wanna close this out so the warranty starts. If they don't come out, we'll just have to hunt them down and I, I believe they will. I guess I would, uh, make a motion, we approve the final payment to OMG, the seventy thousand, eight dollars and forty-three cents.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been introduced by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the, uh, contractor's final pay request in the amount of seventy thousand, eight dollars, forty-three cents to OMG Midwest and in work on the twenty seventeen street and utility improvement project. Is there any further discussion?
There's.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were raising your hand at him.
One comment, you, they talk about the seating, like at our place at the Enterprise, that's not the problem. They can see there every year for the next hundred years, our problem is, they put clay in instead of black dirt. That's our problem. Again, if they would have had black dirt with all that rain we got, we'd have no problem, so, they can come back and reseed, it's probably gonna look terrible again, and I just thought I'd toss that out there. You know, they actually gonna dig up some of these places, um, actually put in black dirt, which was there before. That's the issue we have, I just thought I'd toss it out there.
Okay.
And I guess in response to Kurt's question, I mean, the previous issues that we've had, no, they don't come out and dig up the clay and replace it with black dirt, they come out and they do a little more seeding. And then the grow, the grass starts to take off, but, yeah.
You said somewhere that the grass isn't warranted, did you?
I thought I saw that from Jay, that the, uh, when he talked about warranty, now I, I don't have that in front of me, but, I mean, it'd be great if it would be. I mean, it'd be great if it would be. Because I, I think I specifically asked him, what does a warranty cover? And you, I think I sent that to you, Pat, you sent it on to Jason, and Jason replied to me and I I thought he said it covered everything except the grass. I think they made a very poor choice of soil when they when they backfilled and the conditions weren't ideal. But I think just the quality of what they were putting in, albeit in bad conditions, the quality was poor. I think they used, I don't know if they used some, I don't know where they got it from, but it was not good.
As as Rich said, the, this is from Jason, the warranty in the contract covers all the improvements they performed except turf establishment.
So, well, I mean, going back to that, I mean, if they backfilled those areas, those boulevards, or didn't they, or did they just leave them be and then seed them?
Well, they backfilled them with cruddy topsoil.
With clay?
Well, I don't, you know, if you're saying pure clay, no, but not a good, not a good topsoil.
Well, I mean, it's gonna cost a lot more than eleven thousand dollars for them to dig up two, three inches on each boulevard and fix it.
And they all, they probably all aren't, I mean, some of them are probably just fine. But the area that Kurt had mentioned, obviously is not just fine.
And by paying the full amount then, that's not gonna get that fixed at all, they're gonna be stuck, and whoever else is gonna be stuck.
Can we attach a letter to the check? That restating what they said, that they will address the issues of the seeding and the repair to the apron?
To the caulking?
Or a suggestion, the council could authorize Pat to issue a check in exchange for their written agreement that they're gonna come back and do these fixes. And if they agree in writing specifically, then we have something we can hold them to legally.
I would be, I would be, I would be behind that.
Make the boards work.
I'll work with Ross. How does that sound?
I'll second.
Updating your motion, updating your motion?
Okay, with a letter to, a letter of commitment from OMG to accompany the check?
Yeah, if they agree to take care of the seeding and the apron in exchange for the check.
Okay. Any more discussion? So this is a motion to approve then the full payment with the conditions that we talked about. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose no. Motion carried.
Are there any, are there specific areas, I think Rich, you had mentioned across from?
I think we should keep it vague, I mean, cause we really don't know, I don't think.
You know, at this point, I mean, Kurt obviously has specific areas that he knows about. And I noticed after they had done the slit seeding, that whole block across the street from the TSE building, so the Alden, the North Boulevard of Alden. There were no slits in there, but there was no grass either, so.
But if it's the soil conditions that are the issue in those areas or whatever too, I I agree, we shouldn't be very specific. However, address them somehow.
Right, there needs to be grass grown.
Yeah.
Is there somebody from the city who would wanna be that person in the spring to go and take a look and identify those areas?
I could do that.
Rich, if you're willing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm your grass inspector.
Weed too. Noxious weed inspector.
You're in the big box.
I'm the best noxious weed inspector in town.
Thank you.
Yes.
Big honor.
Okay, moving on to new business.
Council, we've had some discussion, we've heard a little bit from Kirby about some of the concerns regarding the emergency management facility. We've got Sarah here. Kirby brought up to us that there were concerns about that north wall. Actually, it's the wall to the area where the ambulance and EMT staff are basically breaking during the day, and there's a significant crack. Kirby has had Travis Tuckenhagen out there to take a look at it. He has looked at it and said that it appears that water is somehow getting inside there causing some issues, and at this time, he's strongly encouraging us to address the issue. I've asked Kirby to get a quote. We haven't been able because we really don't know everything that's going on inside that wall without digging into it. And then you don't know what you'll find. So, what I wanted to bring to you today was have some discussion about going ahead and authorizing Travis Tuckenhagen to do that work. I have asked Kirby, with my spending limit of thirty-five hundred, if that was something that could be guaranteed. Travis said he thought he could get in there, you know, and take a look at it without exceeding that. But you never know what you find when you dig in there, so. I'm just looking to make you aware of that and let you know that I'm going to go ahead and authorize Travis to go in there to take a look. Hopefully, the cost comes in under thirty-five hundred. However, if it doesn't, this is kind of a situation, emergency situation, although the wa, the weather is very cold, it's probably not leaking in there, but all it takes is a little bit of warm up and then the water getting in there. Do you have any concerns? Sarah, do you wanna say anything about the?
Yeah, they they really didn't know how much it was gonna be until they could get in there far enough. How he worded it to me that day. He felt that it was coming from the outside, this kind of socket piece, not quite the roof, but under there, and a lot was getting tucked in there. From the interior of the building, all you could really see was a very large crack above the the window, so basically he had a line.
Yeah, and like I said, there's no way for them to know. Once you open that up, what you're gonna find, no way.
Right.
I'm just wondering if the water isn't coming in through the roof, you know, through a leak in the roof, how could it? It can't come in underneath the sofa, yeah, you know.
Well, it can come in.
I mean, there could be, it could be an ice dam situation.
It sounds like it's about there for quite some time.
Okay. You know, it could be an ice dam situation that has maybe happened a number of years already. Then it would cause the water to to actually back up uphill and come in. Well, it's obvious it needs to be fixed, we can't let it.
We can't let it.
You're walking on on the street, the outside of the building, where he opened it up to look inside there, you could walk through and see, oh, there is all on it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so you wanna, you're right, vision yourself. Cause I don't wanna go there.
I I don't like giving you a, or giving anybody a blank check. I mean, I feel like we should cap it somewhere. There is no definite quote for it, there's no nothing, we don't know what's gonna happen with it. So, but it does need to be fixed.
At the same time, we can't look, look the other way when a building needs to be fixed.
Be fixed.
Yeah.
So.
It won't, won't get done by itself.
Problem is only gonna get worse, right?
So, I mean, and I don't know how much that's gonna be, I don't know if you say, oh, with a limit of ten thousand, if that's gonna be enough for it's pretty much just a blank check and just say, fix it.
What, at what point do we need to, I mean, well, it isn't gonna get that, at a point where we need to get bids on it, is it? Competitive, I mean, at what point do we need competitive bids?
Being that we're, this is kinda considered an emergency, I think, I think that that's what you
Okay.
Correct, Ross, in a situation where.
Well, yes, emergency fix is exempt from the the bid laws. Whether this qualifies as an emergency, I think, well, maybe. I I think that provision of the law is more geared to things like tornado damage.
What is the, or when do you have to start getting bids, at a dollar amount?
Yeah, it's it's fairly high.
Right, that's right.
Seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Yeah, they changed it over the years, I haven't looked at that recently, but it's pretty high. I can't conceive this or touch that.
And I did, when Kirby first brought this up to me, I said, can you go and just grab a second quote? And I know that Kirby with some of the, some of the issues with his kids being sick hasn't, you know, has been out a few days and hasn't had an opportunity to obtain a second quote, so.
Well, I think it's real difficult even to get a second quote if
If nobody knows how far it's gonna.
Unless they got X-ray vision, they can look through bricks and lumber, you know, that's gonna be pretty hard to.
It's one of those things where it could go to, you know, if we authorize five thousand dollars and we don't get it fixed for five thousand dollars, we're gonna just leave it unfixed?
Well, yeah.
Or stall the, or stall the process.
Goofy things, we just gotta dive in and do it.
We could assign it to Sarah, if it's over five thousand, she can do the repairs.
There you go.
Might not like what you get.
Well, I think the contractor we're dealing with is a reputable person.
Yeah, Travis Latrino's right.
I don't think he's gonna
No.
Do anything that would be unethical.
I'll make a motion for it to proceed.
Second.
I, well, I mean, I, there's no cap, there's no nothing on my motion, so.
To be on a time and material basis.
Yep.
If I find out that it's in excess of thirty-five, I will immediately send out an email to the council and let you know and keep you apprised of what's happening.
Happening, yeah, alright. Alright, motion by council member Batchra, second by council member Cowell, to proceed with the repairs needed at the EMS building. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. And that brings us to miscellaneous business. Council member updates?
I got the library, I can go quick.
Okay.
Something maybe took with Kirby about the, Kathy doesn't know if the bat service ever showed up in last fall. She has any issues in the winter, but they might not be around, so.
What service?
Bats, there was, there was bats in the library, so. Other than, other than that, she got a quote for the carpet, a little over eight thousand. So I think that'll be coming up sometime relatively shortly here, they wanna do that in April and May. The summer reading program will be universe of stories. And she's already booking some stuff for that, so. Wow, that was about it.
I can just give you a quick update, we had a ambulance meeting on February eleventh. Representatives from the city of Arlington, Gaylord and Ridgeview, along with staff from each of the ambulance services. Were there to talk about the possibility of of merging ambulance services. The group at that meeting reviewed a joint powers agreement, which will be sent forwarded on to respective city attorneys for their review. And we also talked a little bit about the the townships, who had expressed, you know, some interest in in weighing in in that process, and we discussed options for how we can reach out and give members of the public an opportunity to provide input. So, it was a a good meeting. In addition to that, we also had a meeting with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Jason Femrite was involved, as well as Jim Highland, in that discussion. As I've mentioned earlier, the chloride limits are being lowered and we're going to have to file an extension, asking them to have more time to figure out how to address the salt that's getting into our wastewater facility. We also talked about the phosphorus levels, which, given the way that our treatment facility is being operated, we believe that we can comply with the lower limits, which they have for phosphorus. So, that's good news and we'll have to continue to work on the chloride. But that extension will give us additional time to figure out how to do that. What we'll probably end up doing in the first year or so is is doing a lot of outreach and educating the public to say that if you've got a old water softener in your basement, you know, consider replacing it and, you know, some of them are set up where they just, every day, they regenerate, you know, regardless of how much water's being used, obviously. The more ideal situation is to have a water softener that regenerates based on the water consumption. So, we'll try and do more public outreach and education on that. Hopefully, that will help bring down some of the salt that's getting into our facility.
I found that to be a very informative meeting. I mean, there were like five people from different pollution agencies and Jason and Lee from People Services and I figured it was a lot of five to ten thousand dollar meeting for about three hours with them, it's pretty heavy. But here's my take on it, you know, and I'm just some schlep that just hangs around, but this chloride is an issue. And they're not sure where it's coming from, but they pretty much think it's from the salt and the water softeners as part of it. But they're not sure, but we're gonna look at that as one of the issues. And one of the things they suggested was, the only way to find out who has water softeners and the age is to go to each house and look in the basement. Which we kinda wanna do anyhow, to see if there's any water getting pumped into the sewer for the sun pumps.
Check the sun pumps.
But I don't think that's gonna happen. Like Pat said, the older softeners regenerate every day or two days or three days. The newer ones go on the amount of water used. So, their premise was educate the public, try and get them to upgrade their water softeners or not to recycle it as often, or cycle it as often as they're doing. Or the other alternative would be for the city to soften the water before it goes out to the residents. Which would be pretty expensive, and then the residents that have the water softeners anyhow are probably gonna keep them, they're not gonna get rid of them. They're gonna soften to soft water. So, it's pretty interesting, it's kind of a, kind of a vicious circle.
So if the city would soften the water before it ever gets to the houses, that means we all would have to drink soft water then, if we wanna drink tap water?
Yeah.
That's right, or you'd have to go before it goes into the water tower.
Yeah, your hard water line would not be a soft line.
Exactly. I don't know if I like that.
Well, you, soft water to water your lawn and so it's gonna get back eventually into the groundwater. By sop, by the city softening everything too.
They talked about Tonka Bay had a, was it a lime? No, I just told you everything I know, but I'm gonna keep talking anyhow. There's a lime softening process, and Tonka Bay has had that, I know, for at least fifty to sixty years. And they had just had to reup, redo their system not too long ago. But then Tonka Bay is only, I think it's under thousand population, is that all right, Pat?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, there are vaults. But I know the cities around that wanted to hook onto Tonka Bay's water because it's really nice. Well, that didn't taste too bad either, had that lime taste.
Salty. Okay, any other items for discussion?
Hospital report.
Uh-huh.
It starts off with a story of what happened at the hospital one day on the sec, on February third, a forty-six-year-old man was found outside unresponsive. Gaylord ambulance transported patient to our SMC, the patient. Gaylord ambulance transported patient to our SMC, the patient had a core temperature of roughly eighty-one degrees and had frostbite. He suffered cardiac arrest and was resuscitated. Um. PAC, a team of our Ridgeview Sibley, uh, local EMTs, Ridgeview EMS staff. All of whom modified their usual duties and practices to assist. Patient was resuscitated near, for nearly three hours, ultimately transferred to HCMC. By ground as water, uh, weather conditions were horrible and prevented air transfer. The medical management and decision-making of the type of case, both the ED and, and en route to HCMC. Is exceptional complex and an example of something that most veterans in emergency medicine. Have never encountered today, the patient was, was fully off the ventilator. As awake and neurologi- no, no, neurologically intact. He was cold, yeah, he was cold, he has cold injury to his skin, but. Will fully recover, I'm proud to be part of the organization that can provide such an outstanding level of core. Care that exceeds expectations, I'm currently at an emergency medicine directors conference and. My colleagues from bigger organizations are blown away by our ability to manage cases. Like this in the rural critical access setting. This was an absolute display of skill, intuition, flexibility, adaptation, and a culture that fosters. The, the innate drive to do what is right for the patient, even if it hasn't been done before or is uncomfortable. The outcome could have been very unlikely, could be very unlikely in most critical access hospitals. And everyone involved in the care of the patient deserves commend- commendation. My thanks go to everyone who has supported our SMC and. The fact that I was out of town and unable to provide any support speaks volumes in the midst of all the negative stimuli. This is a reminder that we are truly making a difference in our market. Exceptional story, that's Ben Nielsen, who's the acting CEO now. While Todd Sandberg is. In the process of being replaced. Moving on into the construction update, exterior work on the exterior of the hospital is substantially complete. Contractors completed work on the parking lot and new helipad late this fall. There will be a few follow-ups, uh, items to address in the spring. The lower level, the new infusion space and pharmacy was completed in the week before Christmas. Staff spent the last few days before the holiday moving the pharmacy from its location on the main floor to the new home on the lower level. After the holidays, we have been focused on moving the pharmacy hoods to the lower level and. And completing certifications. Following the certification of the hoods, infusion will move into its new home in the lower level. And, on the lower level, the last of the flooring is to be installed on, in the corridor near the elevator this week. Which will mean construction on the lower level is substantially. Complete on the main floor with the pharmacy hoods relocated contractors are working on asbestos abatement. And demolition of the old pharmacy space following demolition contractors will be able to complete the first phase of the ED remodel. This is treatment room, isolation room, and behavior room, and one of. The nurses' stations. Once this phase of the ED is open, we will be able to demolish the existing ED and finish construction of the new. Hospital main entrance, the work is planned for completion the first week of May. The final major phase of the work is the demolition of the existing nurses' station. And construction of the urgent care room core area, this is planned for completion by the end of June. Good Sam was sold, is that what I have here? Earlier this week, we met with the leadership team of Good Sam, a few interesting points relating to Good Sam. You all likely know by Good Sam mer- but you all like, oh, this is what I was trying to talk about. Good Sam merged or was acquired by Sanford earlier this summer. And, uh, we don't expect that it'll have any immediate impact on the market, but it will be interesting to keep an eye on. Uh, Glanco CEO came to visit. And I think that's. It for. For my report.
Okay, thank you, appreciate all the information.
I can, just real quickly, I attended this morning a, a meeting of the Minnesota Municipal Power Association. We get together, uh, in Shakopee at the Public Utilities Commission, I have just started attending these meetings starting. Uh, in January here of two thousand nineteen, prior to that, Lisa, uh, was attending. And, uh, they're doing a lot of things, uh, there's a good group of, of people who are in, who are involved. And, uh, they're really investing in some renewable energies, uh, with, uh, with the goal of, of getting there to the point where. It's a hundred percent renewable energies that they're, they're using, so. I'm learning a lot, uh, there's a lot to learn, uh, for someone who hasn't been involved in it before, but, uh. Uh, I'm proud to say that we do have a, a great team that's really working hard to make sure that, uh, we're do- making the right decisions and that we're. Uh, doing everything we can to be responsible in terms of use of electricity now and into the future, so, good program.
Good for a part of. Okay, anyone else? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Batcher to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All in no, meeting adjourned at eight thirty-two.
Take care, Tom.
Have a good night.
Good seeing you, Tom, take care.
CPR at the Fish Fry Zoo, I should have had a boat.
Free?
I'll be there.
Alright, after how many fish? Don't you have to eat a certain number before you qualify?
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Take care, Tom.
Yeah, later. I think this acquisition of the nursing home by Sanford is, is a positive. I wasn't impressed with, uh, you know, what they've been doing with our nursing home the last few years. Particularly as far as the administrators they were putting in there.
No, it's not just this nursing home was acquired, the whole comp- the whole Good Sam was absorbed by Sanford.
Good Sam has a system. Which is a good operator and they have very deep pockets. One question that crossed my mind though is, you know, Sanford is a hospital system. But, you know, I, I think the, uh. The cli- clients or patients over there, you know, have the right to choose where they're receiving medical care. Across the street at our hospital would be the logical place.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see any scenario where Sanford is gonna be sucking patients out of our nursing homes. And sending them to one of their district hospitals.
Does that mean?
Should they have nearby?
No, what is it? It's not anywhere close.